With it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, coming out tonight. Appreciate you coming out. I know there's a lot of things that's going on tonight that could draw people's attention away from this, but we appreciate those of you that came out. Up next is our moment of silence. If you please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. First topic of official business tonight is going to be the agenda approval. And is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda tonight?
Should work. I'll need to remove two items.
Okay.
Items 8A and items 8B. That's a Biotech contract and a dental evaluation contract.
All right. So we are striking item 8A and 8B. And those we will likely push to the work session.
Correct, sir.
Work session will be in two weeks. Those contracts weren't ready for tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Not ready to move on with them at this point, anyway. All right. Any additional changes to the agenda? Hearing none at this time. I would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Totally.
Motion by Commissioner Hensley, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Our amended agenda is approved. Up next is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes the Register of Needs Grant Funding Agreement, a resolution authorizing grant funding applications and award acceptance, a Vanoye Construction Company Design Build Contract, Grants Management Access Authorization, Madison Recovery Pathways Memorandum of Understanding, Madison County Public Schools 2024-2025 Needs-Based Capital Funding Grant Application, Community Promotions Funding Application, and Approval of the August 13th Regular Meeting Minutes and August 27th Special Meeting Minutes. Those are our consent agenda items this evening. Is there a motion that we approve consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Vice, or, excuse me, motion by Commissioner Hensley. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney. We do that before discussion or after?
At your pleasure.
You're the attorney.
You've got a motion on the table. If you want to second it and you want to open for discussion, that would be appropriate.
Okay. All right. Is there a second so we can go to, move to discussion phase? I'll second it. All right. Discussion, County Attorney. We've got the floor first, sir.
On item C, what we have in there is a contract. And there are, I am fine with the AIA form being used. There are modifications as to form that need to be made to that, that are basically legal additions to make the contract more favorable for the owner. This is a generic form that has been prepared by the contractor. And I'm reluctant to sign any, or recommend signing anything relative to a contract that is prepared by a party to the agreement. So there are standard modifications that are made to these forms. There are some additions that need to be changed. There's a reference in here as to Exhibit C being attached to it. Exhibit C is actually Exhibit A. There's just some modifications as to form. As long as you're fine with the contractor and as long as you're fine with the, I am not questioning anything regarding the substantive terms of it. The modifications are simply as to legal form. If you want to approve the contract, subject to those modifications that I would work with your county manager on and get back to them. And I have no other issues.
So if we're gonna, if we're gonna modify it, we need to pull it out of consent agenda, correct?
I think that you could leave it in consent agenda to approve, provided that there is an amendment to it, subject to modifications as to form as recommended by legal counsel. If you feel comfortable with that, and I will work in the county, with the county manager. And once we address those, then we can have you execute it. If you want to bring it back on to review, or you make approval, that's in your discretion. I'll leave that up to you.
What's the pleasure of this board, gentlemen?
It's like a 60 or 70-page document.
It is.
You know, even having to do it, it still let me not really ignore what I'm looking at. So I trust falling to the county attorney.
It does not make any difference to me. I don't know if the county manager wants to address that. But as a general, during any time an AIA contract is formed in all of their other forms, we have a set of modifications that are generally used that owners want to include in there. And I can use those. I certainly have no problem in obtaining those and reviewing all of those modifications with you before you approve them. You're not gonna hurt my feelings. I don't know if the county manager.
The only thing I want to bring your attention is you'll see a couple of blank spots. It says Exhibit C, early design and pre-construction proposal date. That date was left off. The contract was sent before. That date is now in August of 2024. There are seven or eight places you'll see a blank space, and that's the date that will go in there. And that corresponds with the exhibit that's already in the document. That's the only substantive change to that document as written from an administrative point of view.
That's right. And I would want to say the executed performance bonds and the payment bonds to make sure that we're adequately secured. And the owner and the contractor certainly knows that they've got to provide those to us as well as the certificate of intentions. It's just good. I think what they've done is send out a document saying, we would like to use this. We've got this information in it. Give us your feedback, and we can move forward from there. This is pretty well standard contract negotiations. But I think it would be good for you all to be part of this since this is a first very large AIA design build contract that Madison County's entered into. So it could be a good, I think it could be a good learning process.
Very valid point.
Thank you, Don.
I guess my question is, are we still in the negotiation and draft review process? If so, then I would recommend we pull it out of the consent agenda.
I think that we could do that. And that way, we could get this on and we could flesh out some of these terms. I could add the modification. We could get the dates that the county manager referenced. Then we could ask for performance and payment bonds. And if those are coming, it may be appropriate to put it on your work session.
Personally, I would feel more comfortable if we had the contract complete and to the attorney, county attorney satisfaction.
I know your county manager has worked diligently on this and got this draft. And the contractor is moving forward with performance support on it, if I'm not correct.
They're doing pre-site, nothing contractual.
I move we modify the motion and remove.
On 2C. Yeah. The original motion, though, was Jeremy. Jeremy's the only one that can modify his motion.
Yeah. I'll apply by removing 2C out of that. And I'll make the motion.
So we're gonna take, we're gonna, just for, so Jeremy's motion is now to approve the consent agenda for all the items except item C, which we will, excuse me, which we will table until work session. Is that correct? Commissioner Hensley?
Yes.
All right. And the second, I believe, was Commissioner Wyatt. Is that correct?
Second.
Or no, I was the second on it. Never mind. My bad. I was the second on that. So I will, I'll go ahead and I'll second Jeremy's amended motion. So we have motion second. Any additional discussion at this time? Keep looking over here for Bill, but Bill's gone. All right. Bill's on vacation. Bill's not gone, just so everybody knows. Bill has not expired. He's just on vacation. All right. So we have motion and a second. No additional discussion, so we'll move to a vote, all in favor of the amended motion. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting, but I felt that I needed to make.
No, sir. That was totally appropriate. No apology necessary. That was totally appropriate. Thank you. That's what we pay for, Don. Keep it straight. Make sure we don't mess nothing up. All right. So up next, we have public comment. This is our general public comment. Make sure I'm looking at the right list here. They both say public comment, same ones, so. Okay. Nope. Here we go. All right. So there are, there are what? I think we did all in one, but we can make it. Mandy, do you need the clarification?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We're good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's hear it. All right. So up next is public comment. No one has signed up for our general public comment this evening. So entertain a motion that we open and close public comment at this time.
I apologize. Could I please speak for a public comment?
Too late now, sir.
Really?
Yep. Sorry.
Is there any place that I could speak in later in the meeting?
At a later meeting?
Later in this meeting.
No, sir.
My business is about to be shut down by the Health Department. I thought I could address that.
Not tonight.
We did get your email. Thank you for that. We just got it. Give us time to review that, and there'll be some conversation. If you will hang around after the meeting, somebody will speak to you and make sure you've got good contact information.
I'm on a 12-hour day right now. I'm in a coffee shop.
Well, you send us your information on email. We'll have someone follow up with you. Thank you. Unfortunately, we have rules as far as our public comment section, but thank you.
All right. So the motion to open and close public comment at this time, since there's no one signed up.
So I move.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garrison, all in favor? All right. Public comment is done. Up next is Vaya Health, Dustin Burleson. Hello, Dustin. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, and thank you guys for having me tonight. So while we're getting this together, I'll just start by saying, oh, there we go. This is my quick here. Madison County being one of those, having embedded care managers and really working on this model. And Madison County has been terrific to work with. Tony Harris has gave us three letters of support over the past couple of years that went to the secretary and the division in hopes to keep this population, the foster care population, within the regional, regional plan. So Vaya, people that's locally here in the local presence versus the statewide plan. So there was a bid with the state and the department announced a couple of weeks ago that that bid went to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And so what that means is that 100 counties, so they're gonna basically be managing 100 counties as one vendor versus how it was siloed between the MCOs. So there's four MCOs. So that's gonna be a challenge, I think, for our DSSs. The other thing that's important for you guys to be aware of is these embedded care managers likely may be leaving those positions sooner than this transition takes place. Vaya's committed to stay as long as till the transition takes place, which is obviously, you know, we're thinking July 1st at the earliest. But, you know, it is a challenge. We don't agree with the decision, but we respect it. And we think that all of our 32 counties were in support of Vaya continuing to do that population. But I did want to mention that. So the other big thing that happened in the state is Taylor Plan launch. And so this is something, if you guys think back to Medicaid transformation with Secretary Mandicola, and several years ago, is when it's really launched. And then Standard Plan launched two years ago. Wasn't very smooth. And then Taylor Plan was supposed to launch, and it just kept getting pushed back and back by the state for several different reasons. And so it did finally launch on July 1. Vaya Total Care is what it's called here in our 32 counties. And so this is just to give you guys some information of what it is. And it's really that whole person care. So if you think about historically, Vaya has always managed the behavioral health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental mental disabilities population. But when Taylor Plan launched, it became also the physical health population, the pharmacy, the transportation. And so it's really that whole person care. And the Taylor Plan is gonna be the higher level of need and higher level of risk. And so anybody that's in a Taylor Plan is gonna be those people who are higher need versus those in the Standard Plan. This kind of just shows you some of the different populations that is covered. What was known as Medicaid Direct. So there's all these different kinds of things that's happening with Medicaid. So Medicaid Direct is moving into what's called Taylor Plan. And so that's really the biggest thing that changes there. This is just a quick map that shows you who the LM MCOs are that cover what counties. Vaya is a lot blue. That covers the majority of the western part of the state. And then with Cardinal Innovations merger, we took some of those counties. You can kind of see them in the northern and central part of the state. So mid-April, individuals that qualify for Taylor Plan received a letter. And what we learned from Standard Plan is sometimes someone would open up or get a letter, and they don't really know who that person is. So if it said Vaya, or if it said whoever, and they don't know that they're in this plan, they may trash it. And so what happens then, just like with Standard Plan, they become auto-enrolled in a certain plan, and in particular, primary care. And so that was one of the challenges. We don't, we've not heard many of those instances happening with Taylor Plan launch, but they did occur with Standard Plan launch. But it's a good thing to know there is only one Taylor Plan per county. So for Madison County, it is Vaya. The other biggest thing that's changed is now members must choose a primary care provider that's in network. And so again, if you don't choose one, you're auto-enrolled in one. And you have until January of next year to change it if you do get auto-enrolled. The other piece of that, you can move from Center Plan to Taylor Plan. You can kind of see there who the Center Plan providers are. Healthy Blue, AmeriHealth, Chiana Complete, United, and WellCare are the five Center Plans. And so if you move down from a Taylor Plan to a Standard Plan, you're not gonna have those high-level services covered. So it's important if somebody, you know, isn't sure that they ask, because there, you know, obviously, if you're not in a certain plan, you wouldn't have that level of stuff covered. This is just some examples here of what type of services are really covered. And these are, again, your high level of need and your high level of services there. Something just to note, so each person that's in Taylor Plan got a Vaya Total Care ID card. It's gonna have their primary care listed on the card. It's also gonna have a behavioral health process line, a member and recipient services line, the pharmacy line. We know even with Madison County Health Department, they had some challenges when this launched in July of the vendor that's covering the pharmacy line of getting certain things pre-approved through the medications, whether it be a name brand or generic. And so I think Novitas was the vendor. Worked really well to really get that fixed within a few days. And so that's no longer an issue. Anyone at Vaya Total Care Taylor Plan do receive these perks, and they're designed to support the members. So there are things such as wellness perks, pregnancy perks, GED perks. There can be vouchers to get education and stuff like that. So I won't read all these, but just kind of have them there for reference. There's also safety perks and transportation perks. And so you can get up to 24 trips a year through Motive Care to grocery stores, markets, libraries, things like that. Hoping you guys are somewhat familiar with the non-emergency Medicaid transportation that was also launched with Taylor Plan. Motive Care is our vendor there. And that seems to be going pretty well. Couple more slides here. So if you're in Vaya Total Care, you also get tailored care management. And this just kind of shows you what they provide. And it's really that whole person care management that's tailored to the individual, getting all aspects of their health needs. And then lastly, because Madison County was part of the Healthy Opportunities Pilot, which is also called P.O.L.I.T., so you may have heard that. There was a $650 million pilot grant that's just paying for this. And we were really surprised that this many western counties got this grant. So there's some qualifying factors. You have to be in Vaya Total Care Health Plan. You have to have at least one qualifying physical or behavioral condition and one qualifying social risk factor. Kind of see there what the other counties are, some of your neighboring counties. But this pilot really supports your housing, food, transportation, and interpersonal violence. So so far, we've heard great things about it. Certainly, if you guys hear anything, please let us know. And that's what I've got. So I appreciate your time, but be willing to take any questions you might have.
So how do the individuals know what to ask for ultimately? So, I mean, how, I mean, you know?
With the Healthy Opportunities or the Taylor Plan?
Even one.
So they would be automatically assigned a care manager. And so that care manager meets with them. They kind of do what's called a health risk assessment. And so they're talking to them, their guardians. Everybody is involved, which would be considered their treatment team. And part of that's educating them on what's available. So making sure that they're taking advantage of all these perks, of all these opportunities that's available. And it's really a high-level touch point. So they're working with them, you know, several contacts per month.
Any other questions?
Appreciate the update. A lot of changes coming down to five.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you, brother. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have our Constitution Week Proclamation. Get that pulled up here on my computer. No, I've got it. All right. So as, as everyone may or may not know, this next coming week, I believe, if I've got my dates properly, September 17th through the 23rd, it has petitioned by Congress is Constitution Week, established and signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956. And the Daughters of the American Revolution always are very good to remind us that Constitution Week is upcoming, and they have reached out to me. Are there any members of that group with us today? I don't believe there are. Okay. So the Constitution Week Proclamation for 2024 is whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official resignation, recognition, sorry, official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Matthew Wettle, and the Board of Madison County Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in me and us as commissioners of Madison County, North Carolin- North Carolina, we here do proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Uh, let's see, witness thereof, I, uh, hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Madison County to be affixed on this 10th day of September, 2024. Uh, and, uh, we will take care of that document once we're done. Um, let's see. I will make that in a form of a motion, is there a second that we approve the proclamation?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Garrison, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Constitution Week, folks, the 17th through 23rd. Thank you very much. Um, up next is our public hearing on the Madison County Transportation Authority Fiscal Year 26 Unified Grant Funding Application. And, uh, Colonel, who's presenting that?
Kathy will present it.
Okay, hey Kathy. Sorry, I didn't see you hiding back there.
Do you have a list of public comment?
I do. So, uh, first is a presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep, all right. Kathy, floor is yours.
Okay, I'm here to ask for the transportation for three grants through the state of North Carolina for our public transportation. We are asking for three different grants. Our first would be the 5311 Admin's Grant, in a total of $141,300. Our second one would be our Capital Grant of 5311, that would consist of like six lands, new replacements, and a total of $664,500. And then we've got our third one, it's 5310, a Rural Enchantment Mobility of Seniors and Individuals, that's $65,585. We're asking for you to give us permission to send these requests in.
So these are the standard grants, um, the 5310, 5311, and, um, well, the two 5311 grants. So we've got 5311 Grant for Capital, 5311 Grant for Admin, and the 5310 for the, uh, Seniors and Individuals with Disability Grant. Um, these are standard grants that the, that, um, Transportation Department applies for every year, and, um, they all require matches by the county. Uh, two of them, the first two are, well, the first one, the 5311 is 15% match, the 5311 Capital Grant is 10% match, and then the 5310 is 50% match. These are items that are regularly budgeted for in, in your transportation budget, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so we have the, uh, we've heard Kathy's presentation. Um, next is a public comment portion. Uh, there is no one signed up for public comment. Uh, however, pursuant to our normal rules, whenever we have a public hearing on a topic such as this, uh, we do open the floor up to any member from the public to speak to this specific issue. So at this time, is there, um, anyone present here that would like to, uh, speak in the public comment portion pertaining to this specific issue this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion that public comment portion be closed.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Garrison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, public comment is closed on this topic. So now we have our board discussion, uh, with, um, with Kathy as the interim director. Anybody have any questions or discussion points to share with Kathy this time?
The only question I got is the 5310. It says that it would be shared, the amount is shared in percentages with the Federal Transit Authority and North Carolina DOT, but the DOT's got, where they don't, they got no percentage there, so what, is it shared or not?
The state will 50% and Madison, the county 10%.
Okay, so that, that sentence is wrong then.
Thank you.
Huh?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll be good.
Okay. I was just making sure that, I was hoping the, uh, percentage was wrong instead of the sentence.
No, it's right.
Any additional questions? That hasn't, to best of my knowledge, Kathy, that hasn't changed, it's always been a 50-50 grant with the federal government, correct?
Hasn't that been here yet?
At best I can recall, it has been too, from the time I've been on that board. Any additional questions? All right. Hearing none, I move that the, uh, I will move that the discussion portion be closed, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, any discussion on the discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, discussion is closed, up next is consideration of approval. At this time, as the board representative for the Transportation Authority, Transportation Advisory Board, um, I would make the motion that we approve the grants for fiscal year 2026, the grant funding application, uh, approved as submitted with the grammatical correction on that one line, please.
Colonel, I mean, uh, I'm sorry. Don, do we have, I'm gonna lose three separate, let me do them all.
You can, yeah, these are just the grants for the, for file the application, it's not the admin application.
Got you. Seconded it. So we have a second by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, up next is our Finance Officer, Carrie Ledford. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So before you find, um, Budget Amendment Number Three, with this amendment, you'll see donations to your library from the Friends of the Library in an amount of $557.20. See also the donations to the Sheriff's Outreach Program in the amount of $6,095. As adopted at last month's regular meeting, is the additional funds from the County Cannon Foundation for the value-added kitchen in the amount of $100,000. And here too is the recording of additional revenue generated by the Corson Sales Tax in the amount of $58,430.92.
That's one of the higher ones we've seen on sales tax.
Back to school spending, I guess, huh? So Budget Amendment Number Three, am I correct, there is no, no addition or subtraction from the contingency, correct?
That's correct.
Good. This time I entertain a motion, we approve Budget Amendment Number Three.
I saw you.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right.
Good evening, gentlemen. So next is August's financial reports. The top of the next page, which I tried to number for Commissioner Hensley at the bottom, I tried to number, uh, it says number 14. You'll see that we are 16.66% of our FY '25 budget, and on the next page, page 15 of my section, you'll see that there are, for our general fund, we've received 5.83% of revenues and 13.28 at our expenditures.
So 5.83%, is that, pretty, that's pretty normal at this point, that seems a little bit low.
It seems a little low, but I think, I think that's where we were this time last year, we were below 10% this time last year also. It'll go up once the tax bills.
Understood. That's, that's a big driver, no doubt. Anybody have any questions in regards to the financial reports? Still feel comfortable where we're at?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Think you're off the hook, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, madam.
All right, uh, up next, item number eight, County Manager Rod Honeycutt with County Board Appointments. Noel, do you have any kind of county manager report for us, Rod?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just two items, uh, three items for Board of Formers. Uh, the first one, we recommend to table the Housing Authority Board until we get an additional applicant pending your guidance on that one.
I'm still getting there, I'm scrolling.
Till we get an additional applicant?
Yes. Or applicants, period.
We don't have any applicants for that position at this time, correct?
So, Watson didn't put back in?
I'm not sure if he knows, he's on, he's been on, um, uh, huh?
Sabbatical.
Sabbatical, yeah, he's on sabbatical till the end of the year, I think. So he may not know that his position has popped up. Is there a motion that we table that?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right, we'll table that, this, that appointment.
And gentlemen, the next two are table also, we table these pending formal recommendations from the Sewell Water Advisory Board as outlined in the County Volunteer Agricultural District, Agricultural Ordinance. Uh, they have not presented their recommendations, so recommend we table this until they have time to come forward with their volunteers.
So do we know that these people continue to serve until, until they're either replaced or terminated, or how does that work? Do we know?
Typically, they do, that ordinance does not specify, like a lot of our bylaws do in the county, so I would prefer.
So you say that again, what you just said.
This is table, pending formal recommendation from the Sewell Water Advisory Board, as they make a recommendation as outlined in the County Volunteer Agricultural District Ordinance. Our ordinance states that they have to have volunteers from the agricultural, from Sewell Water Board must provide volunteer and have a recommendation for them.
So nobody can just?
Nobody, there's set of criteria associated with each one of the positions.
Both of these are farmers, I just wondered, are they excluded based on the fact that they weren't recommended by Sewell Water?
Yes. They're not excluded, um, and Sewell Water, I think, just needed to have a meeting in order to make their recommendation. Um, it's very likely that those folks would be recommended again by that board, I think.
What if someone else wanted to apply for that?
Please have them send an application.
They still can.
To the County Manager's Office. They would just need verification that they are living in that district and they are property owner in the county, there's a couple stipulations they need to do.
But they still have option.
Sure.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, so the, uh, recommendation is that these two positions also be tabled, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
As stated by the County Manager?
I just, uh, I'm, I'm, I make that motion with the contingency that they present us with something at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna wait on them.
All right, so a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right, those positions tabled as well. I do not believe there are any other board vacancies at this time, is that correct, Colonel?
That's correct, that closes it out. And last item I've got, information over, uh, that I'll hand out for later discussion at the next meeting, I don't have too many time, um, before we get into the next meeting in September. Turn the work session, so that it'll light review. Chairman, that completes, uh, my portion of the weeknight.
All right. So with that being said, we have, uh, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting, and then before we run off, we do need to, uh, go back into our recessed meeting, uh, that will, uh, closed session meeting for land acquisition and personnel matter. And do I need to restate those statutes since our state of previous decision, correct? Correct. So at this time, uh, motion to adjourn this meeting? Is there a second? I make the motion. Second by Commissioner Hensley, all in favor? All right, so this meeting is adjourned, and, uh,